Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the November 19th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll to determine a quorum.
Alderperson Ranky.
Here.
Wrote.
Here.
Singstak.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Shapleski.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Ten present, none excused.
We have a quorum. Scouts, you can start your journey. Alderman Ranky has agreed to allow Troop 586 from Wilson School to present the colors and lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. If you guys want to come up. Come on up, guys. Good.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop 586. We have three items up for public hearing this evening. I will ask the clerk to read item number one.
A hearing on the improvement of South 59th Street from West National Avenue to West Burnham Street and portions of intersecting streets by concrete reconstruction with miscellaneous walk repair, new driveway approaches, storm sewer, storm sewer relay, sanitary sewer relay, water main relay, building services and utility adjustments.
Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, this is the public hearing for South 59th Street. Tonight's procedures are I will go through the project's scope and cost, and then I'll discuss the assessment rates and methods of payment. Then we'll have comments and questions from the Common Council, followed by citizens. Then the hearing will be closed, and the project will be referred to the Board of Public Works later tonight, and there should be a final decision by the Common Council later tonight as well. Here are the project limits, from West National Avenue all the way to West Burnham. Here are some pictures of the pavement. The concrete pavement that is still underneath here was put down in 1924 through 1926, so that's 87 years old. Then the street was resurfaced in 1969 and 1971, so that asphalt that you see is at least 42 years old. It's severely deteriorated. Routine maintenance is very difficult and expensive because we have to send people out to fill all these potholes. The underlying base, which is from 1924, is completely failed, and so we have to start over. And then further underground, the sanitary sewer from 1910 is also leaking and in some places collapsing. These are actual photos from the sewer underneath 59th Street. As well, we will also be putting a new storm sewer. Most of the street does not actually have storm sewer. We'll be putting an all-new sanitary sewer, the existing sewers from 1910 to 1919. We'll be putting in all-new water mains, existing water mains from 1908 to 1919, and then new street lighting poles and cable. The existing cable was put in 1970 through 73. Now, dozens of properties nearby, east of 59th Street recently have reported sewage flooding in their basements, which would be helped by the removal of the clean rainwater from the sanitary sewer. So how do we do that? Well, after the street paving project, the city plans to offer the installation of a sump pump, as well as partial replacement of your sanitary lateral, and no additional cost to the homeowner, valued at about $4,000. This work will be paid for through MMSD's private property inflow and infiltration-removal program. The work will be done on a volunteer basis, so you can certainly decline, but it is probable in the future that the installation of sump pumps would be required to solve sewer backup problems. The project will also include the removal and replacement of all the curb and gutter, pavement, sidewalk, carriage walks, and driveways. Storm laterals would be installed, and they would be installed all the way up to the house if a sump pump is requested. The street width will be narrowed by one foot to allow room for trees to flourish and to lower vehicle speeds. Studies have shown that narrower streets with several parked cars do reduce speeds the most because they reduce the width of the street to a single traffic lane. This forces drivers to pull over and stop to allow opposing traffic to pass. You can kind of see that situation. This is a picture from 59th Street. The trees are bursting at the seams, they really need a little more room, and just a slight narrowing of the street, studies have shown, would actually reduce the speeds of drivers. During construction, then, on-street parking would be provided on neighboring streets. On-street parking permits would not be needed. Police would increase patrols in the neighborhood as well. Project will also include several sustainability benefits. The gravel used will be 100% recycled crushed concrete from old pavements instead of mining new gravel from quarries. Recycled fly ash would be used from coal plants to reduce the concrete mined for the cement. New asphalt would be made from 20% to 35% old recycled asphalt pavements to reduce the mining and drilling for new materials. New LED streetlights would reduce electricity by 66%. Most of the mature trees will remain, and some new trees would even be planted. The trees do intercept the rainwater, help the runoff to soak into the soil at a slower and more even rate, and this takes the pressure off our storm sewers, as well as allowing for the renewal of groundwater. In addition to these stormwater benefits, trees provide a host of other benefits, such as improved air quality, reduced air temperatures in summer, and increased property values. So here's a picture of what the new street would look like. The whole finished product with new concrete surface, curb and gutter, and sidewalk repairs. Here's the cost of the project. The pavement will be $783,000. Street lighting, $69,000. Sanitary sewer, $635,000. Storm sewer, $300,000. Water mains, $627,000, for a total cost of $2,414,000. The city will collect $289,000 in special assessments, which is 37% of this paving portion of the project. Here's a sample special assessment, assuming you have a 40-foot wide lot. The assessment rate is $50.18 per foot. Everyone is being given a storm sewer lateral of $561, so the total cost to the homeowner is $2,568.20. And a few of the people who do have driveways will then also have to pay $6.26 per square foot for their driveway. Now, the bills for this would not be mailed out until March of 2015. Payment options available would include a lump sum payment, or a five-year installment plan, or a 10-year installment plan. So assuming you had a 10-year payment plan with a 4% interest, the first year of your bill in 2015 would be $360 for the whole year, and then the 10th year, 2024, would be $267 for the year. Now, for over 100 years, city residents have historically paid the full cost, 100% of the new street in front of their property, in order to enjoy the unique benefit this improvement gives their individual property. Now, on this project, the city will only collect $289,000, which is 37% of the paving cost. The assessment rate is $50.18 for all residential properties anywhere in the city, no matter how wide your street is, or how high the traffic volumes are, or how high the actual bid prices are, everyone is treated exactly equally the same. So special assessments are the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, county parks, and railroads also pay their fair share as well. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though some properties do not pay property taxes. And then businesses, corporations, and manufacturers pay a higher assessment rate to ensure they contribute their fair share. In this case, their assessment rate would be $62.72 per foot. This map shows every property on the east side of West House that has paid a special assessment in the past 10 years. So you can see that everyone is paying their fair share. Most have already paid for their street and alley in front of their property over the past 10 years. So very few people who have not yet had to pay will certainly be paying in the near future. The city does borrow the funds for this project, so the city does have to pay interest to these municipal bondholders over the next 10 years. So the city passes along these interest charges to the residents that choose the five- or 10-year payment plan. The city does not make a profit off the 4% interest that we charge. And at this point, will there have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions or comments from the Common Council on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Daniel for the great presentation, really, to analyze and clearly, to be specific to the point from beginning to the end in regard to the assessment and the cost. But both us aldermen, for the last couple of years, the roadway really has been in bad conditions. I mean, I receive a few complaints, I mean, in regard to settlements of water, you know, puddles, and, you know, the roadway is really in bad shape, which, you know, time comes, what has got to be done, so. So I'm glad it's going to be for next year, a capital improvement project. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Shapleski.
As you know, I live on 57th Street, and we did our street, they did our streets this year, and it's a terrible experience. Get everything down, it's filthy, it's dirty, but I tell you, having that street real nice and those new street lights are just fantastic. You're back to be able to see everything again, so. But it's definitely an improvement, but it's terrible going through it, I'll tell you now.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments from the council?
That's very keen.
Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience with questions or comments on this item? I ask that you come up to the microphone at the podium here, and whoever, anyone, and sign in before or after your comments, and please state your name and address for our official record. The tall one.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Malika-Robins. I reside at 1400 South 59th Street. My question to you, I live on the southeast corner. Now, being that, if you do repairs on Greenfield Avenue, am I also going to have to pay an assessment fee on that too, beside the 59th Street?
You get a 60% off discount on the longer side, so it's probably going to be Greenfield. We do have plans to do Greenfield probably in about five years. So it is 60% off. You pay full cost on the short side, which is probably 59th Street, I'm guessing.
Well, because the bill that I did receive, or estimated, is about the same price that they put on there.
Okay, well, then, that's correct, then. When we do Greenfield, you do have to pay on both sides, but we give you a big discount on the longer side, so that'll probably be Greenfield.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay.
I can, look, we can talk in the hallway afterwards.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, because this is, we're the first-time homeowners, and I'll guess after hearing this, I would never buy a corner lot again if I get socked twice. Mistakes you learn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Prangoff for 1636 South 59th. I have a couple questions. For the sanitary lateral, my property, the one I own, goes out to the main sewer. Are you going to do any replacement of that under the street or going up on my property?
We are going to replace it up to beyond the curb, at least.
Up to the curb?
Yeah, actually beyond the curb a bit, just so it's out from under the street. So that'll all be new, and that's where a lot of the-
You could go under the sidewalk, too. You've got five feet on my front grass, I found out. You could go up to that, if you want.
Well, we just want to get it out from under the street. That's the goal.
I don't want no disconnect on the lateral, now.
The reason is actually because we're going to be relaying the water service to the waterbox, which is right behind the curb, and the two pipes are usually, if not right next to each other, almost on top of-
So the water line's going to come in a little bit, too?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Now, the other thing I talked to before the meeting a little bit, living there about 30 years, it's always been a concern, it still is, it seems to never go away. 59th's a good street to use to avoid, from Beloit to National, you avoid one, two, three, four, five, six streetlights in that small span, and there's people that do that, and they tend to drive on it like it's not a residential street, some of them. And because you're doing all this construction, I'm hoping some idea could come up with to maybe slow them down, impair them, not speed bumps, but the things that make noise on the road, you got them on freeways, anything, you know, any kind of idea type of thing. It's always been a concern to people who live on the road, especially when you've got little kids, mine are grown up now, but that was another thing that I was hoping you'd think about.
Well, we'll certainly take a look at that. I mean, as I said, narrowing it slightly should help.
Well, I'm worried our mirror's going to get broke off. But we'll see, we'll see. Road needs it. I've been one pushing, you know, I've been one pushing on you to do it. I didn't want to pay $10,000 for a lateral disconnect, and I found out there's others that have the same problem like me. It's a jigsaw puzzle over that, almost 100-year-old road, so I'm glad it's happening. Actually, I thought about the last couple days, and looking at some of the streets have been done, and when 60 was done, I got a son, now he's 24, he always comes in, "Oh, it's so ghettoey down here." Well, he came back from college, drove down the new 60th, and he goes, "This really looks nice." And I'm thinking 59th's going to look like 58, and that it's going to look nice, and I think it'll help with property value, too.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Tom Tucsonant. I own a business property on 1361 South 59th Street. I guess my biggest concern is the time span and access to the property. It's a short block. On my side of the street, there's only three properties, Kegels Inn, the Body Shop, and then the residential home on the corner. And I'm just concerned about access, and are they going to do anything with the intersection on Greenfield Avenue there? Is that going to be left alone until later date?
That'll be left alone for now. We're just doing the streets between National and Greenfield, Greenfield to Lapham and Mitchell. So we're not doing the cross streets. We're going to jump over. Access, I mean, it does help that you're on that short block. I think we can get you in and out of there. Certainly, Kegels already has a driveway, and, you know, you can get through there to the second property and-
The driveway to the shop is on 59th Street. That's the only way they can get into the garage?
We can, we've always been able to get businesses in and out. We can put gravel down or something.
Do they do the span from one end to the other, or do they, because it's a short little block there, do they do that separately?
They'll pave the whole, side to side, all in one day, if that's what you mean.
Well, I guess the length, because it is a short-
Oh, yeah, that'll be done-
Separately than the whole stretch?
That'll be done in about two hours, so, yeah.
Okay.
But we have to let the concrete get hard, and there's going to be a lot of grading going on, so we'll have to put gravel down to get you in. And during the sewer work, that won't be a problem at all, because unless they're directly in front of your driveway, you know, it's a moving target. So they might be in front of your driveway for a couple hours, but then they'll move on down the road, and you'll be able to get in.
When would this start, if it goes-
April, May.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of 2014.
Okay, and about how long, do you have an idea?
Well, about two months of underground work, and then about two months of paving. But like I said, the underground may start at National, you know, but by two weeks later, they may be across Greenfield, and they'll be totally out of your hair, so that's the total length of the project, not necessarily how long they'll be bothering you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Hi, my name is Katrina Gross, and we have a question. In 2004, we moved into the property at 1425 South 59th Street, and we put in $20,000 in our basement to shore up the walls and install a sump pump. Can you clarify the new regulation now that will not allow sump pump flow out? Can you clarify exactly what will be allowed and what will not be allowed?
I don't think there is a new regulation yet. That's something that may be coming down the pike, but we can talk more in the hallway afterwards.
Okay, I agree it needs to be done. It's very old, so yes, I agree it needs to be done. I just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
We'll talk some more.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Well, you know, first time, I'm really, I'm so happy that most of the citizens who spoke tonight, they're in favor of the project. I mean, that's really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Seeing no other discussion, we will close public hearing number one, and we will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
A hearing on the vacation and discontinuance of a portion of unimproved city alley right-of-way behind 2338 through 2340 South 108th Street, between South 107th Street and South 108th Street, north of West Hayes Avenue.
Mr. Steve Share.
Thank you, Mayor. This hearing revolves around the request we received from 2340 South 108th Street for the vacation of a small portion of unimproved right-of-way. Designated as alley right-of-way, but it's unimproved, unpaved, behind this property here. It's 20 by 60, and the owner of this property has requested to be vacated, and the city engineer and planning commission have recommended approval of this vacation. This is just another view of the closer look at the specific area to be vacated here. Again, 20 feet wide of alley, unimproved alley right-of-way by 60 feet, and the purpose of the request would be for an expanded parking lot behind this property. This is currently the Terry's Trends Hair Salon property on Highway 100. Property owners abutting this stretch of alley have been notified, as well as a notice in the paper, three consecutive weeks in the official paper. Planning commission has recommended approval, and there have been no objections to date.
Thank you, Mr. Share. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this item? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number two, and I will ask the clerk to read our third public hearing.
A hearing on a special use permit for Treasure Hunter's Dream, a proposed second-hand article retail store to be located at 6768 West Lincoln Avenue.
Mr. Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Treasure Hunter's Dream has requested an occupancy permit of the address here on 68th and Lincoln. This is essentially at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln and Beloit, and 68th Street. A approximately 2,000-square-foot tenant space, the property is zone C2. Second-hand retail stores are designated as special uses, and special uses are essentially permitted uses with a little additional review. A public hearing is required, and that's why we're here tonight. The scope of this, again, is it's a retail store. The typical range of sales will include books, records, tools, stamps, fishing lures, and so on. This is not a drop-off location, not a thrift store, so the applicant typically gets his goods from estate sales, rummage sales, and I guess he's got a large collection of things. He's opened up, he'd like to open up a commercial storefront, about 2,000 square feet at this location. His hours of operation are typically business hours, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and then Saturday and Sunday from 9 to 4. Staff is recommending that the council grant the hours, the general hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., in consideration of the special use seven days a week. There are seven parking spaces required for this 2,000-square-foot retail location, and three are provided on-site. Planning commission has recommended approval, and there have been no objections to date.
Thank you, Mr. Share. Are there questions or comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Probst.
Steve, I got a quick question regarding Pawn America being so close. Has there been any neighborhood pushback? Have you had any calls regarding this type of store? I recognize that the business models are different, but the appearance might not be such a big difference. So have we had any discussion on that?
I have received no objections or comments or concerns from anyone in the neighborhood. You're right, Pawn America is just on the street and 76th and Lincoln. This is a much different store, it's much smaller, within a strip mall, very small, small business, whereas Pawn America is a much larger-
Right.
...operation, and much more well-known. I don't anticipate there being that type of draw with this location.
I recognized it said that there was no drop-off. Do you know how he goes about getting his materials? I mean, does he have a different drop-off zone where things will be sold in the store from one of his other locations? How does that work?
Yeah, he currently has a large collection of collectibles and, I guess, things that he wants to sell secondhand, and he gets those things from estate sales, rummage sales, and so on, and then he brings them into the store, the things that he feels are, you know, trending in the market, and he'll sell those. But he's not expecting, and nor, as he mentioned, as part of his business operations, this would be a drop-off location, so the public will not be bringing things to him, dropping them off. If that should happen, I guess that's going to trigger some additional review. We'd have to take a look at the special use once again, as well as a site and landscaping plan to ensure that, you know-
Okay.
-this type of site is just really too small for the drop-off function.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Steve, I just wanted to expand on that. So the public will not be allowed to go in there and sell them, sell him things. That's correct. He's not a pawn shop, he's not buying his product from the public at this location.
Pawn America is my district. That's correct. He is, he's not a pawn shop.
Okay.
Definitely not.
And if I have a stamp collection I want to get rid of, and he's, I couldn't trade him, I mean, does he understand that, that this is supposed to be sales-only, no, I mean, do I understand this correctly?
Right, yeah, there's no trading of-
No trading, no buying, he's just selling-
This is his stuff that he's selling to the-
Items that he may buy at rummage sales or on the internet, or something like that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
You know, being in my district, you know, first, like I said, we do analyze, I think, through planning commissions, I mean, and planning department just as well. You know, we also want to make sure that we put in a good business in any corners, but we do have a lot of vacancies within our community. So in a way, if a reliable business comes around, a small business, I'm for, really. That's, to me, I don't want to see vacant buildings, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman May.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, it's my understanding that the Department of Transportation wants to restrict parking along Lincoln for an extended period of time to accommodate the zoo interchange, and while that's not a done deal, it's a possibility. I saw that the parking requirement is seven, onsite is three. Usually, we allow the exception because there's available on-street parking. Is staff comfortable with the three parking stalls based on the type of occupant for this building?
Yeah, that's a good point, Mike. Fortunately, I'll go back a slide or two so we can see the aerial view. You're right, I mean, it's a very tight area here, a very busy area to park along currently, and then compounded with the future construction projects restricted. There is a parking lot here to the west, which the property owner has indicated they have an agreement to park within. That'll be utilized, which is currently utilized now for the various other stores that are in here.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Common Council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Ranky.
I realize this would be a new business in West Dallas-
I realize this would be a new business in West Dallas. Do they have any other locations where they are in business? I guess I'm looking at a track record for this particular business.
No, he has not indicated any other businesses.
This is the first.
Correct, yes.
I see, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the common council on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any people in the audience with questions or comments on this item? Once again, ask that you state your name and address for the record and sign in, please.
Mark Norman, 6762. I'm actually the property owner at that location and I had a conversation with Mr. Share. I guess I misunderstood a little bit. My conversation with him was, I guess, along the lines of things that I needed to do to maybe move this along. So, what I have tonight, I guess, is more appropriate for you, is the plan for some of the things that you were requiring. But I would like to thank you for your support in pushing for business in that area. Very important because that does seem to be an issue with getting tenants. So, I appreciate that support and I guess I'll follow up with you and email this to you then. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience with questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number three and move on to item E on your agenda, citizen participation. This is an opportunity for residents to address the council on matters of interest to them. We ask that you limit your comments to approximately five minutes and we keep this portion of our agenda to 30 minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council under citizen participation this
Good evening, Mayor Devine and members of the city council. I'm here to introduce myself tonight. My name is Laura Gramling Perez. I'm a Milwaukee County resident and I'd like to introduce myself to you and to the other members of the public present today because I'm currently running for Circuit Court Judge in Milwaukee County. I'm running for an open spot. Judge Michael Ghouli, who's been on the bench for nearly 40 years, is retiring at the end of his term next year, so there's an opening in Branch 32. There's not an incumbent or a gubernatorial appointee in that spot and I've been in the race to succeed Judge Ghouli since about May of this year. I know I've met a couple of you in passing. I've been present, kind of walking around and introducing myself at Forks and Quarks and at your National Night Out event and some other events around West Dallas recently and just wanted an opportunity to introduce myself to the entire city council. I'm currently the presiding court commissioner in Milwaukee County Circuit Court, so I sit on the bench now most days and also have oversight responsibility for the Commissioner Courts and Small Claims Court, Criminal Intake and Preliminary Hearing Court, and Children's Court. So, I've had an opportunity to develop a really nice, kind of bird's-eye view of the operation of the courts and how work in one division of the Circuit Court in Milwaukee County really can affect the other divisions. I've done that job for about five and a half years. Before that time, I was a litigation shareholder at Reinhardt Berner Van Durin in Milwaukee and did kind of commercial litigation and some antitrust work in state and federal courts, both in Wisconsin and really all over the country. I'm a graduate of the University of Michigan Law School and Columbia University in New York for undergrad, spent a little bit of time working in the New York District Attorney's Office after college and before law school. And I should note that I think it's important for judges and commissioners to be involved not just in managing their calendars and their caseloads very well and efficiently, but also be involved in working to better the legal system as a whole. Toward that as a court commissioner and before that as a lawyer, I've worked as a member of the Veterans Legal Work Group of Milwaukee, which is a sort of ad hoc group that's been in existence for a number of years now, working to address the needs of military veterans in the court system, both on the civil and the criminal side. One thing that I've done as part of that is to spearhead a relatively new veterans' family law clinic in conjunction with Dry Hooch, located not far from here over on National Avenue across from the VA. I'm also part of a small group that helped us start the Marquette Volunteer Legal Clinic a number of years ago and that is a largely volunteer-driven, kind of walk-in, self-help legal clinic that pairs volunteer lawyers with Marquette Law students to provide brief legal advice to both low-income residents and residents sort of across the spectrum in Milwaukee County. So, I hope to maybe call and follow up with some of you in the future, but just wanted a chance to put a face with the name and I hope you'll watch for me on the April 1st ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to address the council this evening under citizen participation? Oh, boy.
State your name.
Well, it's so nice to be back here. My name is Paul Murphy and I'm a former member of this August body and to paraphrase Shakespeare's Antony, I'll change it and make it nice. I'm not here to bury Alderman Sengstock, but rather to praise him. And when I moved to West Dallas in the 70s, I heard about this young council member from the west side, bright, articulate, thoughtful, reflective, and then when I finally met Alderman he introduced me.[970.12][970.12](laughter) I took the better part of a day to come up with that. No, I was elected to the council in 84, got to know Jim, knew him as a lawyer, obviously. And Jim, I'm just here tonight to commend you and to congratulate you on your many years of service. I'm sure your back is still killing you from the groundbreaking for this building in 1967 but you'll recover if you get in, oh, I don't know, a warmer climate maybe, might be of some benefit to you. But we did a lot, we did a lot of fun things, Jim, and the city's a better place for all the work that was done during your years on the council, whether it was the establishment, maintenance, and preservation of the hospital, the care for the city buildings, the work with the library, the police department, and most importantly, working collectively to have a fine city workforce and people who are dedicated to the continuation of West Dallas. And your legacy is there, you should be very proud of it, I'm sure you are, and I enjoyed all my years here. I got to thinking that, I thought for a minute that there might have been a time when we disagreed, that I could have been wrong.[1052.04][1052.04](laughter) I can't think of one, Jim. No, actually, there obviously certainly were and that's the fun thing and for those of you who weren't here in the 80s and 90s, disagreement is a healthy thing and there should be disagreement and there should be honest debate and we had some incredibly spirited debates. Jim and I, one-on-one, had some very spirited debates and that is part of what makes government good and it makes government fun and it should be enjoyable and the city becomes a better place when you don't have everyone just looking and having a group think mentality. It's good and I looked forward to that, to have a worthy opponent to debate with and I still think on, whether you ended up being right or I ended up being right, I think we ended up doing the right thing as a city and you deserve a lot of credit for that. Again, I'm very proud to have known you, I'm very proud to have served with you and I wish you very well as you leave this August body.
Thank you very much, Paul. Good evening, former Alderman, Tony Stasounis, here to honor Alderman Sengstock at his last meeting. Forty-one years ago, there was a, interesting meeting took place in the city hall here, eager young Alderman, it was April 11th, 1972. Eager young Alderman came in and he wanted to meet with the mayor, not Mayor Devine, but the mayor, Arnold Clentz. And this Alderman talked about some of the things he wanted to do and Mayor Clentz gave some advice to the eager young Alderman and Mayor Clentz warned him, sometimes, you know, people stay in these jobs too long. And the eager young Alderman, Sengstock, said, "Don't worry, Mayor, I'm only going to do one or two terms and I've got a few things and then I'm going to move on."[1166.16][1166.16](laughter) And so here we are, 41 years later. People may not know, when Jim was first elected, he was the youngest Alderman in West Dallas history. Twenty-seven years old, eight months, until a younger, handsomer,[1179.66][1179.66](laughter) more intelligent Alderman was elected at the age of 27 years and four months. We'll keep the names out of it. And I've had a long time to work on these remarks. I was ready to give these when, as you know, Jim has told all of us, I think it was in 2000, that "one more term." So, I've been working on this since 2000 and then I was ready in 2004 when I saw Jim. Tony, Tony, one, one more, just one more. And we had to 08 and, well, I mean, one more has finally come. It finally came. So, Jim, to end, just as Alderman Murphy, your Judge Murphy talked about too, it really was a great pleasure and privilege to be here for nine years with you and really, a lot of the folks that are still here because, you know, I've had the opportunity to move on at the state level, county level, and I can tell you honestly, this was the body that worked together the best. As Paul mentioned, there were arguments, there were disagreements, but I never felt once that the people here didn't have the best interest of the city of West Dallas at heart. And Jim played a big role with his leadership and experience and steady hand here, keeping things on an even keel and like Paul said, there were always disagreements, but there were always disagreements where the person was doing it for a good reason. They just had a different way of approaching it. It wasn't personal, it wasn't because of some hidden agenda, it was really what everybody wanted, that was best for the city. And Jim, I really think that's the great legacy, one of the legacies you have left here in your 41 years is that I really believe, and I think your constituents know, which is why they've returned you here so many times, is that you always had the best interest of the city of West Dallas at heart. And so I thank you for your service, I'm glad I had nine years here serving with you and I certainly wish you the best and I'm glad to have the opportunity to come here and wish you well and I just want to make sure, I don't know who he asked to give that retirement to, make sure you get it in writing. Is that the city clerk or council president? Make sure you get it in writing, just, you know, get it done.
Thank you.
That's why I love these guys, Mr. Mayor. Some days they turn the hopper.
Is there anybody else that wishes to take part in citizen participation this evening?
Good evening, my name is Diane Brandt. I live at 2936 South 93rd Street. I'm also a member of the Candy Cane Lane Committee and I just wanted to inform you that the West Dallas neighborhood bounded by Oklahoma and Montana avenues between 92nd and 96th Street is transformed into a winter wonderland in December to benefit the MAC Fund. For the 28th year, neighbors will join together to show the spirit of the holiday during Shining Christmas. The holiday lights will be a glow from November 29th through December 27th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Friday and 5:00 to 10:00 Saturdays and Sundays. The event is free and visitors can leave a donation if they wish. The donations translate into a perpetual gift of hope and light for the children with cancer. The official collection site is at the corner of 95th and Manitoba. Throughout the month, there'll be a variety of events and entertainment and you can visit the website, which is www.candycane lane wi.com. And this weekend, Saturday, the tree, the volunteers from the school, the volunteer students from the school district will be actually at my residence together to go around the neighborhood and to wrap the trees in candy canes. So, I wanted to inform you of that and ask you to please participate and spread the word. And then also, as a resident of the 5th District, I do want to personally thank Alderman Sengstock for his very hard work, his service, his dedication to the citizens and businesses in our communities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to participate in citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation and move on to item F on your agendas. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess and that is not the recess perceived by our scout troop earlier in the day. Those page numbers are on page two. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. I have a few things this evening. For starters, some of you came up to me and said, "What's up with the stash?" Well, as many of you are aware, there's a movement out for Movember, which is mustaches in November, which is an awareness thing for men's health issues, it's fundraising and awareness for things like prostate and testicular cancer. So, it'll be gone in two weeks, much to the delight of my wife. Few events that had taken place, November 9th, my daughter and I attended a neighborhood cleanup at the Burnham Point Neighborhood Association, which is one of our new neighborhood associations in the 60th and Burnham area. There were about 15 to 20 volunteers from area businesses and the neighborhood that picked up several bags of trash in the area. The neighborhood group is making some great progress and I look forward to seeing it continue to grow. I do want to thank the Tanner Paul Post for putting together an excellent Veterans Day program on Monday, November 11th. I think, let's see, Alderman Probst was there and Alderman Roat was there and there were several department heads, representatives from the police and fire, as well as about 20 veterans. It was a nice way to say thank you to all those that have served our country. Coming up Monday, November 25th, is the 30th Annual Community Breakfast of Thanksgiving that will help replenish the supplies at our community food banks. Tickets are $20 and the deadline is actually tomorrow, November 20th. Lastly, we will have one more council meeting before the actual event, but I want to remind everybody to get the city tree lighting and the city Christmas parade on their calendars. It is coming up on December 27th, I'm sorry, December 7th. There will be a Christmas on the Avenue event in our downtown from 1:30 until 3:30, which will be ice sculpting and artwork, hay rides, breakfast with Santa. At 4:00 until 4:30 will be the city tree lighting program at the plaza outside and then at 4:45, the parade steps off along Greenfield Avenue. That concludes the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any alderpersons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
Alderman Barzac and I were informed last week Friday that Michael's will be holding an informational meeting tomorrow at Madison Elementary from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. For those who are watching this on home, at home perhaps a week from now, this is November 20th from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. Both of us will be in attendance. This is a meeting put on by Michael, so I'm not sure we're going to be saying much, but we are interested in seeing people's input as to this, this proposed use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderpersons' reports this evening?
Alderman, oh, Mayor Devine.
Alderman Ranky.
Alderman Sengstock. Anyway, in keeping with honoring the veterans, if you came in the lobby of the city hall, the celebrations committee is again sponsoring the giving tree for the veterans on the ninth floor at the VA, most of them which, which don't have families at all. And so, the committee has decided that we would honor them by having the community come together and provide gifts for these 39 veterans on the ninth floor. The stars are on the tree, the stars denote the name of the veteran and also the gift that he is wishing for. There's also stars for cash, you can donate cash, in which the committee purchases coupon books that the veterans can purchase things at the commissary at the VA. It's been a proven program, the veterans are so appreciative of anything that is donated to them. The gifts should be returned unwrapped on December, by December 18th to the mayor's office and from there, the committee wraps them on the 20th and then we deliver them on the 22nd of December in time for Christmas Eve opening. So, again, please support this worthwhile cause if you can and also, if you don't choose a star, for whatever reason, they also are asking for generic gifts, a simple gifts of bath shower gift sets, country western jazz, gospel, big band CDs, socks, anything Milwaukee Brewer-related, soap, shampoo, conditioner, sports-themed books, DVDs, fishing, hunting books, Christmas decorations for their rooms, air freshener for their rooms, Christmas candy, Twinkies, Hostess cupcakes, and western movies, DVDs. So, certainly, any of these things can be delivered and the committee will take care of seeing that the veterans are provided for these wonderful presents at Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Ranky. Are there any other reports from the alderpersons this evening?
Also, and I,
You may.
Mayor Devine, if I may, I never thought this day had come. If I may, I never thought this day had come. My partner of 21st years is abandoning me. We'll put it that way. I have to say, we've had a good working relationship, and I certainly congratulate him and wish him well on his deserved retirement. I don't know if you know, but he was honored to be the longest-serving alderman in the state, which is quite an accomplishment, 41 years of giving service to our community. He will be missed, except at election time. Election time, you know, things weren't always running very smoothly, because when the numbers were a little higher than I got, he had a problem with this, talking to me even. It was very difficult at first, but after winning three terms ahead of him, he finally realized that maybe I wasn't so bad after all. But he's been a good partner, and really, I thank him for his wisdom and his dedication, and I will miss him, as well as most of the council members. His humor is dry, but I mean, he was always very positive, and certainly served us well in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Sengstock.
Members of the common council, Rosley, thank you for those fine comments, as well as Tony, Paul, and Diane Brandt. Forty-one half, forty-one and a half years with a love, with a love affair for the city of West Dallas, you know, the city that, that I was raised and educated in, came back, decided to practice law, children went to school, they ultimately graduated from the, from the system, and I just kept carrying on and on and on. I just, I just, it was very difficult, very struggling over the last number of years, whether or not I could ultimately leave this position as a 5th District representative. So over the last six months, I truly have been struggling, and as we get into the fall, I was talking to Paul Zealer, City Minister of Officer, in terms of my thoughts about finally departing. And he said, "Jim, we have a budget coming up." And I said, "Okay, Paul, I'm going to commit myself to the common council, to the city. As chairman of the finance committee, I will stick around through the end of November. We're going to be acting upon our budget a little bit later this evening." And with that, if you take a look at to the left of me, over the years, I've just, I've been saving these, our annual budgets, my first budget, this is the 42nd budget that I've been involved with, but the first one was still is here, 1973. And rather interesting to go through some of the numbers and what our, what our expenditures were, how many people are actually employed by this city, and we're just measurably less than what we were back, back in 1973. We're a little under 700 back at that time, and, and now we're doing, providing the same services as, as we did then, and with, with, with so many fewer people than, than we had at that time. But, you know, I try to, you know, certainly as a, as a, as a, an alderman, we know that's a privilege and it truly is an honor. And, and Paul Murphy and, and Tony Staskunas were, just hit it on the money that we had some great debates, we had great dialogue, and what, one of the aspects of, of leadership in the city that I truly enjoyed, and there's two groups of people, but one of the aspects is, is what they alluded to, we had just great debate, great dialogue, and there's never any personalization. As I take a look at other members of the council this evening, and our mayor, we all came from different backgrounds, different work experiences, and we bring everything that we have to the table. And that's what's so interesting about being an alderman, is because we work with each other. And we just, we, and I just, it just marvels me how much, how much I didn't know as I listened to other members of, of the common council over the course of the last 41 and a half years. And, and this is one of the reasons why I didn't leave, is because I just enjoyed the membership of, of my, of my comrades, my peers, is that they're so much fun to be with, and I always enjoyed coming down to these meetings, and of course, have meetings after the meetings, and whatever else we're involved with as, as leaders of the city. And truly, every one of you have had your, the best interest of the city at heart, and there's no reason to believe why my successors in our positions will not treat their constituents likewise. Now, I take a look back at behind Tony Staskunas, and take a look at the board of, of pictures of our, of our mayors, I've had the fortunes of, of serving with eight different mayors, and also serving with 31 different members on this common council. And what's really strange about that collage of, we know we have six mayors, but take a look at Tony Staskunas is just next to his, his right shoulder, who is the young kids with the picture over there? How do you ever get in the collage of, of these, of these older retired, expired mayors?
That's what this job does to you, Alderman.
But that's really, and, and you know, and I, you know, we could talk about all, all that we've accomplished, and, but you know, what we will do, really do as aldermen is, we're the closest through the constituency, we make sure service, services continue, we try to work with the taxpayers so they understand our plight once in a while, in terms of what taxes or tax raises may be. We answer the questions, there, you know, their concerns, we, we turn them over to, to staff members to help them, and that's what really our role is, and, and we all enjoy our work. Now, and the other group of individuals that really is, is what the city is all about, is all of our employees, and, and starting from, and I'm not going to mention any names because I would offend others because I just forgot them, but starting from department heads and with our assistants, with all staff, with all employees of the city, this is what the city is, how we can function, how we survive, because all those employees truly are working to make this city what it has been in the past, and, and what it is now, and what I know that, what future common councils and future employees of this city will, will, it's part of their, their goal, make the city a great place to live in, and do business, and educate, have children educated in. And I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be leaving this city, I'm, I'm always going to be around the corner, and some days you look around, there's Sengstock running around, and I know it's state of mind, I'm going to, but I'll be in, but I'll be around, and I'll come in down to some of these meetings, and, and when there's a time that, that Paul Murphy or Tony Staskunas decide to retire, I'll be up at the podium making a few comments about them. Because I think Tony Staskunas is another one. "I'm never going to leave office, Jim, I'm never going to leave office." And Tony's doing such, did such a good job in the council, and as well as in the State Assembly, and now, he's just started to dabble a little bit in what the, what the county board's all about, and we look forward to what all occurs over there. But I, again, I'm so very thankful, I had the privilege of, of serving the residents of the city for those 41 and a half years. I truly will miss, miss the city, I truly miss what I do, my conflict of time with both my calendar and that of my growing grandchildren, make it, make a pretty easy decision though, because I take away, I weigh on the scale, what, who are you, what are you going to do? I'm going to go to the side of my grandchildren. That's what it's all about this, at my stage of life, my chapter of life. But, again, thank you so much for your support and, and assistance in enabling me to, to lead, and, and I know that you'll continue to do so with, with my successor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other reports from the alderpersons this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say a few words. By knowing my good buddy Jim Sengstock for 27 years, you know, and I like to say very loud, besides being alderman, he's been a truly friend, you know, he always got the humor in his face, he always got a good words to address on, on anything, you know, always been, in my part, been helpful, I believe it to myself, I mean, I'd like to say that aloud, he's been a good, a good leader, a good man for this community, and I'm really going to miss him. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other reports from the alderpeople this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council regular meeting of November 5th, 2013.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Rankie, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item J on your agenda, items not referred to committee, I'll ask for a motion to, let's see here, place item six on file, place item five on file, and refer seven, eight, and nine to the city attorney for legal review. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Probst, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'd like to ask Council President Lysick to join me at the podium, as well as Alderman
This is a resolution of commendation for Alderman James W. Sengstock. Whereas alderperson James W. Sengstock is leading public service as an alderperson of the city of West Dallas after serving 41 and a half years in his capacity for the city of West Dallas, and whereas alderperson Sengstock served as common council president from 2004 to 2012, chairperson of the administration and finance committee, board of public works, license and health committee, vice chairperson of public safety committee and license and health committee, and as a member of the advisory committee and safety and development committee during his 41 and a half years of service. Whereas alderperson Sengstock also served on the committee for economic development, the economic development partnership committee, the block grant committee, and as an ex-official member of the West Dallas Community Improvement Foundation, and whereas Alderman Sengstock has faithfully and conscientiously served the citizens and businesses of the 5th Aldermanic District of West Dallas during his tenure, and whereas Alderman Sengstock has contributed significantly to the health and vitality of the 5th Aldermanic District and the entire city of West Dallas, and whereas alderperson Sengstock has contributed to the city of West Dallas as a whole, is valuable advice and counsel, and has fearlessly upheld its principles of good government, and whereas the city of West Dallas many times has profited from his contribution of wisdom, advice, and action, and whereas Alderman Sengstock is deserving of special recognition and commendation for his years of leadership and dedicated service, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of West Dallas that alderperson James Sengstock be and is hereby specifically commended for his dedication and service to the citizens and businesses of the 5th Aldermanic District of West Dallas and the entire city as a whole, and congratulated on a job well done. Be it further resolved that the common council hereby extends to alderperson Sengstock and his family its best wishes on his future endeavors, and its best wishes for a long, prosperous, and healthy retirement.
Now, I know it feels like having the Super Bowl trophy, the Lombardi Trophy. But thank you very much for, Tom, and Mayor Devine for this, and I'm not going to make any further comments, but truly, this will be a resolution that'll be carrying with me for, for the rest of my life, and it's so meaningful, the substance of this resolution, it goes beyond what I thought would occur this evening, but I, I just, it's without words at this, at this point, and now, the, the next, I believe, piece of legislation or something to show you how soon they forget, I send a letter in, and right away, the letter in, they're going to put a, file right away. So, they're going to file it right away. Now, what kind of respect is that for that? For a guy 41 and a half years. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that I've known Jim for over 30 years, and served with him on his council for over 30 years, and during that time, Jim has always shown nothing but the utmost respect for his counterparts up here in the council, and for all of the employees of the city of West Dallas. He has always eloquently argued his views, both in committee and on the council chambers, and he has also respectfully listened to the opposing point of views. His constituents have reelected him repeatedly, which is a testament to his service to the 5th District. I think the thing we're going to miss the most, anyone that's served on a committee or attended a meeting with Jim knows his sense of humor. He likes to play some practical jokes from time to time, he always lightens up a meeting with, with a little comment here and there, and sometimes meetings can get very stressful, and it was always a pleasure having Jim there to just lighten them up a little bit. He's always had a positive attitude, you never hear anything negative from him, it's always positive. I wish him the best. We know we're going to see Jim, he's a West Dallas kid, he's going to be around the city for a long time, and I know we're going to continue to see him at all of the various charitable events, such as charity dinner and forks and corks, and we're all happy to sell him tickets to those events.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Alderman Lysick. If there's no objection from the council, I just have a few brief remarks. The saddest thing for me tonight is that this takes away my favorite joke to drop when I, my favorite moment with Jim Sengstock was when I had been mayor about 90 minutes, and, and we were getting together after the meeting, and he asked me what year I was born. And I said, "Well, 1971, why?" And he got this sheepish kind of smirk and looked around the room and realized I was five months old when he first got elected. So, but I would see Jim around, I'd run into him at Irish Fest, working at Lynch's, selling corned beef and potatoes and things like that. It did, did stop him about, it took him about two and a half years, three years to stop calling me Mayor Bell when he was reporting out things. He finally, he finally got that down. And just lastly, you know, every time you have an elected body like this, you get this balance of institutional knowledge, and then you get a balance of that plus new people with new ideas, and they always seem to co-mingle, and his institutional knowledge that he has brought to this body is going to be deeply missed. So, it's been a true pleasure working with you, even going back to when I was at the county and you were council president, and I look forward to continuing to get to know you and, and grow with you. And lastly, I think I, I realized finally the reason you're finally not running is, is because those, those yard signs you've had since 1972 on wooden stakes are finally so faded that nobody can read them anymore, so. But Jim, seriously, congratulations, I wish you all the best, thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Mayor Devine. Alderman Barzak.
I'm not going to make a comment because there's words that, that really can't describe what's going on here, but I did find in my desk a photo, and I'm going to put it over here on the desk when we break for recess, and you'll, you'll see Jim over on one side, and you're going to see Tom Lysick over on the other side. And it's not the first council, because I think Mayor Barlick is in it, but there are three mayors in the picture also, Mayor Barlick, Mayor Cashmore, and Mayor Turk are all there, and my father's in there too. So I'm going to put it down on the table when we break for recess, and everybody can take a peek, I think you'll get a pretty good chuckle out of it.
Is that out of That '70s Show?
Yeah, I think it was before the show.
Okay. Back to business. Item K, standing committee reports. I'm sorry, do we need to approve the resolution? President Lysick?
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Motion with a second by Alderman Roat, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, it will be recorded unanimously. Standing committee reports, administration and finance committee.
Mayor Devine.
Sengstock.
Just another budget, another one. This evening, we have items on the agenda, we have number 10, 11, we have our resolution with respect to the budget, then we have the appropriation ordinance. Now, the, just a couple of comments on the budget, I believe it's a good budget, commend staff for the hard work, we have a number of hearings, both public hearings for the, for the constituents, as well as, as the meetings between staff and, and members of the administration and finance committee, represents a fair treatment of our employees, it's considering the revaluation of real estate which occurred this past year, it's a... year. It's, the taxpayers will be, when they get their tax bills in a couple of weeks, will be satisfied, and in terms of whatever you read in the paper, I believe that very few comments will be placed to the phones and the homes of our 10 aldermen and the mayor. But with that, I'm Mayor Devine, I move in accordance with our committee's recommendation, vote is 5-0, to adopt the resolution and to pass the appropriations ordinance.
Second. There's a motion with a second by Alderman Lysick. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Chapeleski.
I'd like to amend the budget to remove the proposed position of operation analyst/sustainability coordinator, maintaining the funds in a sustainability fund.
Second.
There was a motion.
I'll second that. Second by Alderman Weigel. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Chapeleski.
Before last year's budget, this came up before about this position. We said, well, we'll discuss it further during the year. I guess up in August, there was something on administration and finance agenda. There was very little discussion about it, and technically, it wasn't even discussed until a week ago Monday, when we really got into it. I think by keeping the money there, we may go that way, but personally, if you look at all the items that this person's supposed to do, it's impossible for one person to do. It was supposed to be for one year, and now we're already talking three years, so now we're committing two more budgets to how much money this person's going to cost. And so, I just think that we need to back off a little bit. I think we need to look at it a little bit better, maybe going with a consulting firm that has a number of people that have expertise in a number of different items, you know, or go in looking at staff and taking recommendations from our staff and utilizing this money, and if they need better equipment or better training.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other discussion?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
I just want a quick clarification on what the motion was. Was this to put the money into a fund for sort of the use of sustainability, I believe? Was the purpose of this more for the management review, restructuring of the city? I just want to understand what the purpose of the...
It was to accomplish the same thing it would have been if we were to hire someone, either going with a consultant or anything, to overlook the city and see ways that we can save money.
Change it, I think. Change it to sustainability. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, on the amendment, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Singstock.
No.
Vitale.
No.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
No.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Lysick.
No.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
No.
Five in favor, five opposed.
Breaking the tie, I'll vote no.
Five in favor, six opposed.
Motion fails. The budget is before us.
On the motion, the main motion, Mayor Devine.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Ranky.
What was the motion?
This is on the budget.
On the budget, the budget.
Oh.
The amendment failed.
Roat.
Aye.
Singstock.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Barzak.
Aye.
Chapeleski.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
May.
Aye.
Probst.
Aye.
Ten in favor and one opposed.
Motion carries.
That's all. Mayor Devine.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that the council stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Ranky. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We are in recess.